All the meaning to order, you can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for coming. We have no visitors wishing to speak tonight. Quarter of committees, we do have a policy committee update.
Sure. Review four policies, policy, may I just go through them in Ms. Collock myself, Mr. Pennella, Mr. Bellisle was there, I'll just go through them in number order. So the first one is 5660, which is the school food service program. Minor changes, there's a lot of discussion around the fact that there's a national school lunch program and a school breakfast program, underneath it there's a child nutrition program, but all that aside, the biggest change is in the restriction of sweetened foods in school. The old language was, sweetened foods are restricted from the beginning of the school day until one half hour after the end of the last scheduled meal period. It's now midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day.
Good change.
So we had 12 oh one, no sweets.
Why? What was the thought process behind it?
I just think it cleaned up a lot of the morning stuff. If you think about like, for the middle school parents, the lollipop sales when the kids are coming into the morning.
Okay. This is a language that comes from a policy service.
Yeah.
I know, but like, this seems, okay. Sorry.
The next one is 5741, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and other safety sensitive employees. The one significant language change was, the language said opiates, perens, including heroin, now it just says opioids, so it built the umbrella, so rather than break them out. But most of the discussion was around the fact that since we subcontracting out air busing, a lot of the language in this policy is really incumbent upon us, making sure that first student is following the practices within this policy. So it is our district policy, but really first student is the one driving all the activities.
And they are, and they review it, and they do more than we do, as an actor.
Yeah, very, and a lot of it's in our contract with them.
Next is 7222, diploma and/or credential options for students with disabilities. Some of the language around the low pass, safety net, and appeal was changed. A score of 52 to 54 on up to two weeks exams can be successfully appealed. And then there was a bold one, new language around, in the graduation ceremony, and rather than read all of it, it basically allows children that fall within the category of career development, occupational studies commencement credentials, CDOS, and skills and achievement, SA commencement credentials, to walk with their class. Even though they might not be done with their education because of the 21, age 21 issue, they can still walk with their class. And then the last one is 7313, suspension of students. Some clean up language and semantics around protected due process rights. The biggest conversation revolved around language around a minimum suspension period. And is a minimum suspension period a number, or is a minimum suspension period more of a formula based on multiple criteria that led to the administration saying the minimum should be X? And it actually is the latter. So it's the child's history, the nature of the event, risk for recurrence. So the word minimum is not literal, a number, the word minimum is a review of the circumstances, and the minimum for this case is whatever the answer is. And there was a lot of discussion around that issue. They captured okay? Anything else? Mr. Bellisle, you were there, Ms. Collock?
No, they're all revisions, and they're all in the new business for your consideration.
Great. Do we have any other committees?
All right, thank you very much. Pleased to welcome Mr. Bellisle and Mrs. O'Hern and Mrs. Otto, Dr. Otto here, for our special education and people personnel services update. Welcome to the three of you. I know you have some exciting things to share with the board, and even some late breaking news as recent as this afternoon.
As of 12:45, yes. I'm actually, I am excited to be back. So I'm back in the role of special education, and I'm happy to come back and present, been a couple of years, but I'm happy to come back. We've got a slightly different structure, as you know, I think most folks know, but essentially I'll be, I'm overseeing the special education department, and what we've moved towards is an elementary secondary model, so that our folks, I think you know, but I'll let them introduce themselves, and then we'll move forward in our agenda.
So again, my name is Jessica O'Hern. Thank you Board of Education for allowing us this opportunity tonight. My current role will be moving more towards the secondary level, so I will be the Committee on Special Education chairperson for both the middle school and high school, support the students with disabilities among both of those buildings, as well as transition into post-secondary life.
And I'm Maria Otto. I am going to primarily be responsible for CSE chairperson at the elementary level, and also some oversight with preschool.
Congratulations on your new roles with us.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
We're lucky to have her. So, thank you, enjoy. So real quick, just our agenda for the, for our time this evening with you. We're primarily going to focus on really those components that relate to the strategic plan, and those are really enlisted under number three, learning and achievements, student life, and Amherst pride. But before we jump into that, we're going to start off by sharing with you some data trends and some program updates. Of course, there are a number of things that are always ongoing and continue to grow and change. However, we highlighted some things that we thought might be beneficial for you to know, that are somewhat more recent or recently changed. So that's what we'll do for you this evening. You see sort of the triumph right there relative to the strategic plan. Now, and all those pictures sort of align with that. Our learning and achievement down the bottom, and I'll explain a little bit more as we get to that slide, our student life, and Jessica will talk actually a bit about that, and then our Amherst pride, which is some of our collaborations, and of course, the Tiger's Stand Food Pantry is one of those collaborations for a few review with you this evening.
So firstly, I'll discuss some of our data trends. We have a classification rate of about 10%. When we speak to classification, that is the identification of students that have disabilities within our district. Classification is typically determined at that initial Committee on Special Education meeting, and then followed up annually. So our classification rate is approximately 10%. That is inclusive of all students who attend Amherst Central School District, in addition to the ones that are actually in our buildings, and also ones that attend programs in, through Bosie's, as well as agency placements as well. Our classification rate, as you see, is compared to our New York State average and overall national trends. The preschool enrollments, ages three and four-year-olds, those are students that are identified as preschoolers with a disability. It ranges from ages three through five. Right now, we have a cohort of approximately 64 students, and it has been consistent among the last couple of years with that number. Those are students that attend our UPK program, but also preschools in our community, as well as some students that remain at home to receive some of their special education services. When I speak to least restrictive environment, what that means is it is the length of time that students with disabilities are amongst their general education peers and receive instruction in that general education environment. In Amherst, we pride ourselves on an inclusive philosophy, where our students are primarily spending 80% or more of their day in general education. For students that spend less of their time, 40% or less of their time in general education, those are typically our students that are in more self-contained settings, due to more significant cognitive behavioral or social emotional needs. And that also includes students, again, that are attending outside of our current district buildings, Bosie's placements, as well as our agency placements as well. As I mentioned, we pride ourselves on an inclusive philosophy among our K through 12 programming. So our, we have integrated co-teaching services among all grade levels. Integrated co-teaching is the presence of a general education teacher, as well as a special education teacher. And then when the special education teacher is not technically in that room for special periods, then we have a teacher assistant that is under her direct supervision. That is, again, as I said, available to all students K through 12 with disabilities, with the addition of additional programming, such as resource room, related services, including speech, OT, PT, occupational therapy, and physical therapy, counseling, and other individualized services as well. For students with more significant needs, like I mentioned, either cognitively or behaviorally, we do have self-contained settings. As you see, the ratios indicated at our elementary, middle school, and high school buildings, an 813 classroom consists of a maximum of eight students, one special education teacher, and three aides, and then the ratios are reflected below. It has one aide and one, and one teacher. Or again, in our 1213s classrooms, those are maximum of 12 students, one teacher, and three aides. Among our buildings, we opened up a new classroom this year at Smallwood, which allowed us to have more of our students receiving their education in our buildings, among their peers and their community members, without having to send them to other, other programs. The programs, the self-contained programs at Smallwood, through the middle school and high school, consist primarily of those students that are more cognitively deficient, if you will. The ones, the self-contained classrooms at Windermere through eighth grade, focus on students that have more of those behavioral and social emotional needs. Again, still promoting those inclusion opportunities to the greatest extent possible, as well as opportunities for inclusion.
So we'll be on to that bullet three, which focuses most heavily on strategic plan. So of course, we have a number of activities and initiatives that are going on throughout the district at all times. What we're going to focus on here are actually three areas. The first is one I'm going to start with, and it's something I was lucky enough to be involved with before I transitioned over, and continue to support, and that is programs for our English as a new language stu-, English as a new language students. So essentially, that means students who come into the country, or come in from out of the district, who don't speak English, or English is their second language, or third language, or fourth in some cases, to be quite honest with you, as we meet some of our kids coming in. So as you can imagine, it poses a great deal of challenges for students coming in. We know with our own kids, they first learn to listen, usually hopefully, they learn to speak, then they learn to read, and they learn to write, and it doesn't always occur perfectly in that fashion, but as they grow. We know that as students come in, learning a second language, and again, or more, that poses some challenges and risks for us. So we try to make sure we supplement their instruction as best we can, some of that's provided during the school day. We have found that through some grant monies, through Title III, that provides some additional services, and what we've done is create an after-school, and in one case, a summer program, for our students, and you see some of the pictures there that relate to that. So at the elementary level, for example, we have a program that is based on thematic units. So we have three six-week units, where students who are, English is their new language, get to participate in, as I said, thematic units, surrounding in, this last year, what we did is we had one relative to brains, and so the students were able to go to the UV Brain Museum, Buffalo City Hall, so community sort of resources, as well as the Asha Animal Sanctuary, which is our third, so animals and other kinds of, again, learning, language acquisition, vocabulary development, and then leading into the listening, speaking, reading, and writing skills. How it essentially looks for a student is they go out on a field trip, to these, to these places, come back, and then the curriculum is created to support that theme, so vocabulary is taught, supported, and enriched. And you see in the upper right, actually, we borrow some of the technology they're able to use during the day, that Dr. Schoenfeld, I think, shared with you at one of your prior board meetings, where you got to play with the VR goggles. So these kids are getting to use the technology and some of the resources that all students have access to, but it's a supplemental service to support them beyond the school day, knowing that they have some challenges that our typical kids don't have to face. The middle school and high school have similar models. We've tweaked those over time, because we've found that some students, in some years, really want to do that after-school activity, and a couple of years ago, a summer opportunity was much more advantageous for that, so that's what we did. So there was some flexibility around that. As you can see from the numbers on the bottom, the, our opportunity to grow these programs has been directly related to the number of students we've had to service. If I go back to when I started this district in 1998, that number was about 35. In 2011, it was 71, and this is last year, we have had 173 students who speak a different language, come in Amherst doors and come out, and some of those students have come in and since left, but we've had a total of 173 students come in and come out, received some form of ENL services during this year from our ENL teachers and our general education services providers. Just a little background for that.
Okay, we'll touch on the continuation of our professional development. This year, this, late this winter, we facilitated a professional development at our middle school, focusing on strategies and ideas and suggestions based on research surrounding our accommodations and modifications for students with disabilities in that general education setting. We have since followed up with our building administration, and will be forthcoming with turnkeying that information to our general education teams as well, forthcoming this, this late spring and into the fall. Most of that professional development surrounds itself with, based on teacher need, and how to continue that inclusive philosophy, and make sure that we are ensuring those inclusive teaching practices. Again, this year, we also had our culturally responsive teaching initiative, which Maria will begin to talk about.
So yes, continuing with our learning and achievement initiative, our strategic action plan, just speaking to the culturally responsive teaching initiative, some of you may be aware that it's been in the district quite a while, we're actually on our 10th year. The collaboration, we've had collaboration for quite some time with both NYU, Gary Howard and Erie One Bosie's, and approximately 10 years, it was right around the time that I started, and I've been lucky to be part of it since that time. We started developing this professional development to roll out to our teachers and staff across the district, and it's a great opportunity, it's evolved over the years, every year we add something new, based on our training, based on our changing needs of our students, and it's something that we really feel strongly about, we've really valued it, and we want to make sure all of our students' needs are being met. Jessica's going to speak a little bit about the most current history, since it's evolved and our training has evolved as well.
So this past summer, our CRT, culturally responsive teaching team facilitated a training to all of our administrative cabinet. Out of that training came some suggestions as far as moving the CRT training forward, beyond that initial day introduction, if you will. So we have begun those discussions throughout this previous school year. Dr. Maria Otto, myself, Ms. Grace Malin, and Mrs. Leslie Bauer attended multiple trainings through Erie One Bosie's and the NYU Department of Disproportionality with Dr. Maria Hernandez, to again, continue our ongoing research and training, so that we may then facilitate that upcoming research with our consistent trainings. We most recently, last month, had a cohort of 20 participants among all buildings participate in our CRT training. And interestingly, Mr. Stephen Henderson, we may recognize, he is an actor that was in the movie Fences with, alongside Denzel Washington. Maria and I, over our break during that training, were briefly discussing our next steps, and we were talking about the Blackness Project, or I'm sorry, the Whiteness Project, that had been a research study outside of Buffalo, New York in 2014, surrounding, it took perspectives of white people on the perspective of race in our community. Since then, Dr. Stephen Henderson has begun to develop the White, or I'm sorry, the Blackness Project, which is in response to that, offering different references on racism. Maria and I were talking about including some of that into our next steps. We had initially emailed Mike that very moment and said, we have some ideas surrounding Stephen Henderson's work, and he said, well, he's in our high school right now. So we had the opportunity during that training to bring him upstairs under Mr. Bellisle, as well as Mr. Schoenfeld, to allow him to speak to our, to our CRT team. So I'll just play a short video, because it was very exciting, and we received a lot of positive feedback regarding that impromptu visit.
On March 29, 2018, a special guest, Stephen McKinley Henderson, visited Amherst Central High School. Amherst resident, an award-winning actor, spoke with 12th grade Amherst Central High School students for the third time. We were lucky enough to ask him to be a special guest for our culturally responsive teaching training that was happening just upstairs on the same day. It's, and I was there for, not the one recently at the Unitarian Church, but before that, they had a, you know, a screening and a panel that, and Palladino was on the panel. That was, there was fireworks all over the place, fireworks all over the place. But it's good that the dialogue was happening, you know? It's got to, and I said, I tell you, I think of this book that Condoleezza Rice, yeah, once, I never forget, you know, she's a Secretary of State, and she was Republican, and so they were using her many times as an example. And they would say, you know, you see, you're, you're an example that things have gotten much better, much, much better. And she was still getting tired of being used as an example of, because she, you know, her achievements are exceptional for anybody. I mean, her, her command of Russian language, and all the studies, I mean, she was just, she was an exceptional student, she's not an example that things have changed, she's an example that you can get there, you know?
How do you get back into it? What's that?
Right.
Okay, just now.
So we're going to, here's a little bit, and talk about student life and the strategic plan, and some of the initiatives that we've had in the area of student life. One that we're going to talk about today is the Pause for Love Initiative. Some of you may be familiar with the Therapy Dogs International Program, that we've, we've had a collaboration with Karen Schelberg, a physical therapist within the district, is one of the people that kind of initiated that. It has largely taken place within our elementary schools, but we've had therapy dogs historically, since I've been there, in the building, working with our students, primarily in the 811 classrooms at Smallwood. But since then, Maria Goldman actually initiated this program, Pause for Love, at the middle school, and she has, the dogs actually come into the classroom weekly. The students have an opportunity to read to the dogs, and it gives, obviously, it's very motivating to have a dog there, and then on top of it, they have an unbiased listener. So as they're reading, they're developing a lot of skills, like empathy, compassion, and then also practicing their reading, so they actually develop their all-reading fluency. We actually have a chip, a clip from Channel Two, so we'll play that for you, so you can hear a little bit more about the program.
They lost him.
Learning to read is no easy task.
No matter what, good day, fashion, good, bad, cat.
But for this group of Amherst middle schoolers, reading time can be even harder. That's because these kids live with some level of developmental disability.
Kids in the class, some have Down Syndrome, some have autism.
Starting in October, teacher Maria Goldman asked the SPCA of Erie County to bring in some of their dogs and cats to help these kids read. It's a part of the society's Pause for Love program, the goal for these kids, to ease the pressure around reading.
I've read so much about the positive energy and the power and emotional confidence that comes with these therapy dogs.
And the response has been, well, you can read it on their faces. Mrs. Goldman says unlike other human listeners, the animals offer no criticism or correction. She says she's seen improvement in fluency, eye contact, and overall confidence.
I'm reading to a dog named Wuma.
Why are you reading to a dog named Wuma?
Because I love reading to her.
Each animal that is a part of Pause for Love has gone through orientation with the SPCA to test their behavior. Terry Johnson, owner of Lily, a 10-year-old golden retriever in the program, says for as much as it's benefiting the kids, it's benefiting the animal and their owner, too.
It's a very special thing to be able to share the dog with people.
Pause for Love started more than 10 years ago with just a handful of animals. Today, the program has grown to more than 400. That's 400-plus dogs and cats around Western New York, lending a back for petting, ears for listening, eyes for understanding, and always, pause for love. In Amherst, I'm Stephanie Barnes, Channel Two News.
Such a great idea.
Sure is.
Yeah, well, the SPCA's Pause for Love program does.
So we're going to talk about another initiative under the student life aspect of our strategic action plan, and this one is about the Tiger Strike Cafe, which is actually within the high school. And in addition to offering students an opportunity to get a hot drink, like coffee or tea or hot chocolate, this is also a program that has helped our students in the 1211 program and Mrs. Bakowitz's program, to have an opportunity to interact with students, and also facilitate the exchange. So they have to work with money, they're going to have a lot of behind-the-scenes skills, where they're working on their functional academic skills, including taking inventory, learning reading and writing, and math skills associated with this, and then obviously the social aspect, where the students are able to interact with peers each week during this morning period. This program was a true collaboration, you're going to hear Patrick Kapperman, the high school department chair for special education, introduce the short video.
Tiger Strike Cafe, every Friday morning, from about 7:45 until 8:30, we're selling coffee, hot chocolate, cappuccino, and a variety of hot teas for a dollar a cup. Proceeds go to pay for the cafe, and any additional proceeds that have been senior class, so it's something we've just got ongoing the last couple of months with some good success, students are enjoying it.
So lastly, within this student life portion of our presentation, we're going to talk about the TIES program, and TIES stands for Together Including Every Student. This is a mentoring program, it has been around, it came to Buffalo approximately four years ago, it started with Amherst and Williamsville, and traditionally, it's seen as a one-to-one friendship, and it's partnering students with disabilities with mentors. The students with disabilities are students ages eight and up, and they're partnered with mentors grades, grades eight and up. And that's traditionally how it is run, facilitates after-school activities and community types of relationships. Amherst kind of took a spin on it and offered community events as well. So we had a kickball event, Jessica's going to talk about another event, but it kind of fosters those relationships, which is obviously rewarding to both the student with a disability and students that may not have a lot of exposure to students with disabilities. Amherst, there's an application process, our middle school and high school counselors help to establish the mentoring relationships. Those students that are interested can go directly to our website, we included a little screenshot of our website and where the application is, but students can go directly to that website, and then the counselors help to partner those students up. And Jessica's going to share an anecdote about a recent event that occurred through TIES.
So Erin Cogan is our transition coordinator, and she's also recently become our TIES coordinator. So this winter, one of the events was a bowling event at Transit Lanes, and I had the opportunity to attend with all four of my daughters. It was very exciting for my daughters, because one of our Amherst students attends a Bosie's classroom at Maryville Middle School, of which my daughter attends. So they established a connection at that time, and since then have interacted well with each other in the halls, and have become quite, have established a friendship, which has been really exciting to see that partnership among other students in our community.
All right, so we're moving on to the last component, which is Amherst pride, and our focus here really is around our collaboration. Many of you are familiar with our ongoing collaborations with Damon College and the Thomas Foundation Center with our after-school program. That supports, for those who not, or aren't aware, supports our intermediate students at both Smallwood and Windermere, to attend an after-school program for a component for a duration of the, of the school year, where they receive support in their homework, as well as interventions around areas of reading, writing, and math, where they may be struggling. And those interventions are purposefully, I guess, correlated with what we provide here in Amherst, so the students aren't seeing and hearing something totally new, they're going out, getting supports, and hearing the same language and same types of interventions they're used to, to sort of boost, as opposed to hearing something totally different, and honestly, in many cases, making them struggle more. The second you'll see there is Gateway Therapeutic, where Gateway Longview is, as you might be, where I started last year, in a collaboration that took us about a year to develop, and they are currently in our buildings, providing therapeutic services to families and students who might not have received those services otherwise, due to transportation and other needs. And that collaboration has been absolutely fantastic, I could share 100 quotes with you about feedback we've gotten in just two years. The last is a relationship with Child Protective Services, where similarly, there is a liaison from CPS coming into the district, allowing for a face with a name, so we have collaborations with those individuals. So in case there's any questions, we've got that relationship available to us, not just for responding, but also being proactive and proactive, and supporting students and families. Thank you. The, the collaboration I want to focus on this evening is our Tiger's Stand Food Pantry. Again, many of you are familiar with this, we just started this last summer, we're not even a year in. The original, I get, original plan was really to create a collaboration with the Food Bank of Western New York. We had met originally, and actually, Mr. Griesmer had met along with me, who's here, and we had met with Mr. Pennella and talked about ways in which we could achieve this. There, of course, were some roadblocks. There, of course, were some roadblocks, and in order to get some, pass some of those roadblocks, we looked at bringing out a third collaborator, and at that time, we talked with the folks over at St. Paul's, including Pastor Steve Bigner, who you see in that picture standing behind the cart, and we could not have picked a better partner. This year has been extremely successful. We started the project being told by the Food Bank of Western New York, we needed six months of successful practice. We made it about two and a half months in, and they immediately said, "All right, we're ready." So we beat their timeline heavily, in fact, it was our goal to open by September, by the start of school, which we achieved. Just some quick numbers, we started off in the first month with 41 individuals walking through the pantry, last month, we had 112. That is inclusive of 43 families within our school district and essentially representing 50 students approximately that benefited from the food pantry. Qualifications, so just briefly, essentially, there's some income qualifications, as well as residency within our, within 14226, and then the part of 14221 that we touch on as we head over near the 290. The food pantry is open one day per week, we alternate during weekday and a Saturday for those who schedules become a challenge. We are the only food pantry in Western New York that allows for choice, so essentially, families can come in and choose the food they want, based on their ethnic or dietary interests, as opposed to just being forced to take boxes of pasta and cereal and rice and sauce, for example. They can, they have some choice, and some of that choice has really been because of the relationships we've garnered. Trader Joe's, for example, has offered to donate fish, and they donate a ton. Both spots, I'm not sure, Mark, have donated a number of vegetables and fruits over the course, and obviously mostly during the summer, but they have recently offered to come out and help build some vegetable gardens, which will be, which will be growing, and that's part of the updates. So we've got some exciting stuff to come. One of the other updates is that we're adding a third room. So we started in a room, you don't see pictured here because it is now an office space. We started small, thinking this will be enough. We immediately realized it's not enough, so now you see the space in the lower right-hand side where you see Carolyn Catalano, who I can't thank enough, I wish she could come out of the screen and we could all thank her, she has been an absolute godsend, she makes the whole program run, to be truly honest. She is one of our aides within the district, has been one of our aides in the district for years, and has done nothing but great things with the food pantry along with Pastor Bigner. You also see pictured there somewhat in our audience, one of our middle school teachers, and honestly, you could probably put a ton of middle school teachers up there, Mr. Genesis here because he had stopped out that day, and he has offered, along with our art clubs, to help support the third room, which will be sort of a play area for the kids who come and, you know, you go to Wegmans or Tops and trying to shop with two or three-year-olds is dangerous. So having said that, we've created this playroom, and they'll be painting one wall, I believe, with paint that actually turns into a chalkboard, and the kids can run in the wall, they'll have games and areas, we'll have volunteers supporting and playing with the kids. So we've got a lot to come. I could sit here, like in the Grammys, I could thank a million people, right? But middle school in particular, I do want to thank Mr. Griesmer, I know is here, I know their middle school, their service learning project has revolved completely around the Tiger's Den, we have units within our buildings, our, some of our, a lot of our teachers, our families, you see a big donation in the middle there, that was during the play at the middle school, and that was just a small portion of what was donated that day. The Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, other community service agencies who had donated a ton of time, money, and food to the pantry, which has helped make it so successful. Lastly, I do want to note one thing, I think you're all aware of this, but we got some news today at 12:45, 12:43, to be example, over email, where we were nominated by Laurie Sosenko, one of our employees, for an excellence in collaboration award in Erie County, and Erie County Association of School Boards, along with Hodgson Russ, do this nomination once a year, and we were informed today that we were selected as the, as the award winner for that, which I think we have something coming into June, I haven't gotten the official letter, I really, literally just got an email. It's actually from Bruce Fraser, who all of you know, noting that he felt bad that the letter may not get to us in time for the announcement, so he wanted to send us an email and sent it to Mr. Penala and I and a couple of the folks. Of course, I really shared it out with some of the folks you see pictured here, and I know Mr. Penala shared it with all of you, I believe, or Mr. Steinle, I think that you shared. So it's kind of a fun day, ironic timing, today to find out that that was provided to us, which is a huge, huge, huge benefit for the district to be recognized that way, and honestly, these folks are the reason why you see pictured here. So I just want to formally thank them, though again, I could go on and on about names. Lastly, is we tie it all together. We think about student life, we think about pride, we think about learning and achievement. I just wanted to share one student, we have a student here, Ahmed, who is one of our recent graduates from Amherst, and he sort of represents how all of those things culminate and come together for our students as we look towards their future as adults, right? Where we can all remember a time we were in kindergarten through 12th grade, and it all prepared us for what we are now, or at least I hope it did. And in this case, we certainly hope it did for Ahmed. Ahmed came to us as an immigrant who spoke very little English and had some significant developmental delays, and the questions were thrown around, what are we going to do for Ahmed, how are we going to support him, are we going to make sure when he leaves us, we only have a short period of time, but then help him be successful. A lot of folks, of course, spent a lot of time as we look at learning and achievement, but also in our collaborations, and in this case, this collaboration is with Beachwood Homes, Summit, Erie One BOSEs, ourselves, of course, and a program called Project Search, which is an international program, really striving towards providing internships and work-based learning for students with disabilities, so as they move into adulthood, they can achieve a job and a successful life. In this case, Ahmed not only found success in it, but then was immediately hired, and he's sort of their star, if you will. If you go to the Summit website and the Beachwood website, he is front and center, so I'll share with you his 15 seconds of fame, if you will. I had, I had to. So this is a small clip of what is the much longer video, so here's Ahmed.
Yeah, that's okay. Mom? The residents love to exercise. When they see me, they'll be like, "Can you run the exercise?"
There's his 15 seconds. So Ahmed, you could sit with him for hours, much less 15 seconds, he's just an absolutely engaging, and when he says they come to him and tell him, they want him to run the exercise class, they really come to him and want him to run the exercise class. He's just a fantastic, engaging individual that came to us, to be frank, quiet, reserved, and unsure of what he's supposed to be doing here. And you see this adult, and now we realize why we do all of these things and why we have a plan like this strategic plan to support all of what we're doing for kids, so when they become adults, they're all finding some level of success. So I think that finishes our presentation, and certainly, thank you, and if you have any, certainly if you have any questions, any one of us can answer, and we've thanked you in as many languages as we possibly can.
Congratulations on your work, too, wonderful for you and your team.
Absolutely, thank you.
Nicely done, and, you know, that seems to be the tip of the iceberg for Pastor Steve. We're looking forward to further collaborating with him to benefit the families of 14226.
You got it.
He's got some big ideas. Thank you very much, nicely done.
Thank you.
I'd like to also just provide a brief update on the superintendent's student cabinet. So since our, since the last time I updated you in December, we met twice in January and again in March. The Tiger Striped Cafe that you saw in the video there was actually an idea that was initiated in January at the superintendent's student cabinet. Dante Lasting is one of our senior students that brought the idea forward to Mr. Pigeon and I, and Dante brought it then forward to the class advisor, you know, is there a way, basically, he said, "Is there a way that we can provide kids with an opportunity to get coffee here at school? So many kids are walking in with their Tim Hortons or their Starbucks, and, you know, if there's something we could do here, it might be a good opportunity for fundraising." So of course, that idea grew into what you saw today, which is the Tiger Striped Cafe, so that's a very tangible piece that initiated at the table at 7:45 in the morning on a Thursday in January at our superintendent's student cabinet. In addition, in January, we talked about some initiatives for Black History Month, which was forthcoming at the time, and the strengths and weaknesses of the Challenge to Change program, because many of the students in that meeting were participants in the Challenge to Change, so most of them were change agents, in fact, in that program, so Mr. Pigeon was able to get some good feedback about how to improve that in future years. Then in March, we met, and at that time, I really used the kids as a user group, you know, when we're looking at planning our capital construction project, we have user groups, and so as we're looking to move into planning Phase 3, one of the major renovations in Phase 3 is the cafeteria and the kitchen, so we asked them everything that they liked about our current cafeteria, everything that they didn't like, we spent more time on the latter, and they provided input on seating, food options, repairs, provided ideas for how to make the high school cafeteria and kitchen really a school and community gathering place, which is our goal. So they were very helpful in providing a lot of input for me to be able to carry forward and Mr. Pigeon when we go and sit down with our architects. So very bright young minds that are coming to that table, and we're seeing a lot of tangible things that are improving our school that are initiated at that table. So I would also, she's not here, but Mrs. Ward, if you recall, the superintendent's student cabinet was kind of initiated out of Mrs. Ward's Fulbright experience, where she studied student governance in the Netherlands, and so that was really how the project initiated, so thank you to her.
Thank you. With that, we will need a motion for new business.
Make a motion for new business items, we'll have 1A through T, 2A through E, 3B, C, E, G, and H.
All right, do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, 1A through T, 2A through E, and 3B, C, E, G, and H, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. I would like to say thank you to the Alumni Association in particular for the donation of a tree, Mrs. Fritz, thank you very much. Appreciate that, I understand that's from your class.
My class, yeah.
Class 3.
That's 1973, huh? That's the best.
And that is for some of your classmates who have been lost, is it?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Also want to congratulate two of our administrators that are here, Mr. Wiles and Mr. Crombie, on your tenure tonight, so congratulations to you both for that.
Appreciate it.
All right, do we have any follow-up actions? Then we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
We'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everyone, for coming, appreciate it.